I'd like to call to order the Board of Directors Business Meeting of April 25th to order. Are we ready to go? All right. Would you please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General Counsel, would please call the role.
President Bial.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
Director Cobb.
Here.
And is Vice President Hines excused?
Yes, he is.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. If I can get my computers locked up here. Tom, I've got a locked up computer here. I don't know what's going on. Can you get it to unlock? Oh, Dr. Garcia fixed it. Yep. Great. Thank you. All right. I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
May I move adoption?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Is there any questions or comments on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is adopted 5-0.
4-0.
4-0, sorry. I'm so used to the 5. Okay, here we go. All right. Recognition of Staff, Students, and Community. Item 5-1. Recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Awards to Sharon Chambers-Gordon, Raising Our Girls. Mr. Volpail.
Good evening, President Bial and members of the board. You have made partnership one of our four strategic goal areas for the district, and to honor that and honor our partners, every month we present the Gold Star Partner Award to a key community partner. We know we can't do it alone as a district, and in so many cases, the partners step up and do things that we just can't do. And that's certainly true tonight. The organization Raising Girls, or the Raising Girls Organization, was founded in 2017 with a mission to provide South Sound girls with care bags of personal items. These care bags are tangible testaments to the joy of girlhood and are visual representations of the respect and love the community has for our girls in our schools. Raising Girls aims to help ensure that all girls feel pride in who they are, to be unique, and understand the capacity they have to be individuals who can make a difference. In the United States, the statistics show that one out of five girls stays out of school during their monthly cycle. And as the father of three beautiful young daughters who helped raise them, I know this is an important issue and important work that Sharon and her group are doing. Tacoma Public Schools has schoolgirls who are missing school because they don't have access to the necessary personal hygiene products. Raising Our Girls brings community together to address this very pressing and urgent issue. This year, in partnership with our own community partnership office via the Help-A-Student Fund, Raising Our Girls has provided students at five of our highest need high schools and six of our highest need middle schools with onsite access to the very important personal hygiene items they need, plus shampoo, conditioner, body wash, toothpaste, toothbrushes, washcloths, deodorant, lotion, and body oils. While the organization does primarily serve girls in our schools, they also are making some personal care items available to boys as well. Please help me honor Sharon Chambers-Gordon and the Raising Girls Organization.
I am delighted to be here, and I was just so surprised to receive this email invitation for us to receive this award. It is extremely meaningful and gratifying. We have been doing this work kind of silently over the years, and then when we had more requests, we decided that we were going to form a nonprofit organization that allows for us to be able to partner with different organizations. The first person I called was Superintendent Santorno, and I said, "This is what we'd like to do. We'd like to partner." I didn't know about the Help-A-Student Fund, and then when I met with Amanda Scott-Thomas, she indicated that was a perfect avenue to be able to provide some donations for the girls. So we are being very intentional in what we do in terms of looking at the schools that need the most, have the most need first. But when we deliver to some schools, we were asked the questions, "So what about the other schools?" And we delivered to a middle school, and the report from one of my team members was that the lady at the front desk says, "We need deodorant for the boys." So we are going to put together care bags for the boys as well, and as summer approaches, we know that that is very much needed, correct? So we are very happy to be here to receive this wonderful award. We love this partnership. It is important work. We are the voices for the girls who have no voice or feel that they don't, and in each care bag, we put an inspirational card that says, "You're beautiful. You rock. You can do this. You are important. You are seen. You are heard." And we are very grateful for the opportunity to be of service. I have my leadership team members here, some of them. There are 13 women of us. Men aren't invited yet. They might be when we start doing boy stuff. But I have with us Andrea Smith, Renee Houston, Deborah Baker, Dale Golda who are with us. And we have a leadership team, and we are looking for volunteers. The one thing that we have that everyone in the community can be involved in is the One Bag Drive. We're asking people to get one bag and to fill it for a girl with the products that Dan mentioned. And if you can do that, we have a Facebook page for donations and instruction, and we have a website, and we're just asking for you to help support that. So if each person in here can commit to filling one bag with full-size shampoo, conditioner, body wash, sanitary products, deodorant, wash rags, that would be wonderful. So far, we had a goal up to April 30. 30 yet for 300 bags. We have filled 195 so far. So we have, what's the math, 105 left to go. So that would be amazingly wonderful if we could get help to fill those bags. So our email is easy, info@raisinggirls.org. So you can email us, and we'll get a bag out to you or bags, and you can fill it for us. So thank you again for this wonderful award, and we will continue our partnership. Thank you.
Thank you again for your great service for our kids. Item number 5-2. Recognition of former SPO Sean Hoy for saving the life of an injured Tacoma man. Mr. Michael.
Welcome, everybody. I'm the Director of Safety and Security, Mike Rupert. I'm here to, I'm proudly here to present an award today, and I want to tell you what happened, how this occurred. Last year, on June 7th, 2018, it was a Tuesday evening, then SPO School Patrol Sean Hoy received a call from Sonatrol. That's a district's security monitoring system. Sonatrol reported pounding sounds coming from the School of the Arts, SODA, on Pacific Avenue. On SPO Hoy's way there, Sonatrol provided an update that indicated the alarm system picked up sounds of broken glass and someone screaming in pain. SPO Hoy called for Tacoma Police Department assistance. Once on the scene, SPO Hoy discovered an injured man in a large pool of blood. We have pictures, but I didn't want to show them because it was very graphic, very bad. Upon quick inspection, SPO Hoy found a deep gash several inches wide that had slashed the man's hamstring to the bone. Thinking quickly, SPO Hoy retrieved his trauma kit from his patrol car and applied a tourniquet on the man's upper right leg. Tacoma Police and Fire Department personnel then arrived. Paramedics provided additional treatment and transported the man to the hospital. The police department determined the man had injured himself while vandalizing the building. SPO Hoy, as the first responder, saved the man's life by stemming the loss of blood and stabilizing his condition until paramedics arrived. Since this incident, SPO Hoy has left the district to become a police officer for the town of Ruston, which is definitely our loss but their gain. Sean, I'd like to have Sean and his family come up here. Stephanie, Gavin, Blaine. You know, we might as well have grandmas, both grandmas, come up too. Sherry and Terry. Now, I want to read this award. So this is a Maturious Life Saving Award in recognition of your responsive actions resulting in saving a life, presented to Sean M. Hoy, June 7th, 2018. Your proper application of training, experience, and equipment exemplifies your dedication to duty, the preservation of life, and the service to the community. Thank you, Sean.
Do you have anything to say? You don't have to. Thank you, President, and the members of the board. Thank you very much for your time and your recognition. However, I'd just like to say that I just happen to be the guy working. Had any one of your highly-trained school patrol officers been working there, response would have been the same, result would have been the same. I just happen to be the guy who is working. So you have a very talented crew, and I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Medical education piece. I'll just add that we're trying to convince the general public also that learning how to use a tourniquet is something that's almost as important as CPR, so, but it's not easy to do, so that's for another topic, another day.
Let it loose every few, every, so many times. You might as well just say that right now. You tie it, and then you let it loose.
I'm sure you saved his life. That injury sounded like it was, he was going to be gone.
Okay. Moving on. Item 5-3. Recognition of six Tacoma high schools for earning national academic recognition from the Washington Post. Dr. Hostetter, I think this is yours.
It is. Thank you very much. Good evening, President Bial, members of the board, Superintendent Santorno, Deputy Garcia, and our student rep. I'm Doug Hostetter, and I'm the Executive Director of Secondary Education. What a great moment of recognition for Tacoma Public High Schools. You, the board, the district leadership, our high school principals, and of course, the staff and students. You see, in the spring of 2015, you, the board, adopted Policy 2406. That's our Academic Acceleration Policy. In short, the policy eliminates barriers and opened doors for our high school students. You have given them equitable access to college-level classes. Kudos to you. These college-level classes are classes taught in our high schools and allow students the opportunity to earn college credit at the same time as high school credit. In five, in all five of our comprehensive schools, they are recognized by this award. We offer five Advanced Placement or AP courses in five of those schools, and FOS, we offer International Back Laureate or IB courses. The AP courses are supported and sanctioned by the College Board, and the IB courses are done so by the IB organization. Both course types offer students a rigorous college-level curriculum, recognized by colleges and universities across our country and the world. So I've just got just a few slides. The award is now called the Challenge Index, formerly known as America's Most Challenging High School, and is given by J. Matthews of the Washington Post. It's a national award. So the Challenge Index is the oldest high school ranking system in the country, beginning in 1998. It is the only list that does not rely on test scores. It ranks high schools in a simple ratio, the number of Advanced Placement, International Back Laureate, or Cambridge tests, we don't have Cambridge in Tacoma, given at a school each year divided by the number of seniors who graduated that year. Participation in these courses is a unique measure of the depth of learning. Testers cannot dumb down the test or the exam. They are written and graded by independent experts. Success on the exams has been linked with success in college. So this is a slide that's a little hard to see, but I believe you have a packet. It may be easier for you, but I wanted to get all the schools in the state of Washington that were identified or recognized by this award. I'll put my glasses on for this little slide. And so if you look, out of 27 schools, 27 schools in the state of Washington were recognized by this award. Number nine in the state was Lincoln High School. Number 14 in the state was FOS High School. Number 21 in the state was Mount Tahoma High School. 25 in the state was Science and Math Institute, or SAMH, and 26 was Wilson High School. So out of 27 recognized schools, Tacoma is represented, is represented by six of our schools. Also on the slide, you can see I kind of broke it down by national percentile. So you'll see Lincoln falls in the top 3% of high schools in the nation, in the nation, I want to emphasize. Mount Tahoma, the top 5%. Mount, excuse me, FOS in the top 5%. I'm having trouble with my glasses. Mount Tahoma, top 7%, or top 8%, and then you've got SAMH and Wilson in the top 10% in the nation. So in summary, to use a sophisticated academic term, wow. Tacoma had six schools, all five comprehensive schools, recognized in the 27 Washington State high schools. No Washington State School District had more schools represented than Tacoma. Bellevue was the next with five. Lincoln was 71%. Mount Tahoma and FOS had far and away the highest percentage of subsidized lunch students. The closest school in the top Washington State schools was at 54%, and that was North Central in Spokane. So without further ado, I would like to introduce the heroes of this story and their staffs from Lincoln High School, Mr. Pat Irwin; from Stadium High School, Mr. Kevin Aketa; from the Science and Math Institute, Mr. John Kettler; from FOS High School, Ms. Lysandra Ness; from Mount Tahoma High School, Mr. David McCollgan; and from Wilson High School, Ms. Bernadette Reed. Let's give them a round of applause. Go on. No John Kettler.
Moving on. Superintendent's report. Superintendent Santorno, if you would, please.
So I've asked Mrs. Verhar to give us an update on our math adoption. Thank you.
Great. Good evening, President Bial, members of the board, and our viewers online. In recent Friday reports, I've provided you with an overview of the process for adopting instructional materials. This work is part of our multi-year commitment to update our alignment to the Washington State learning standards. The Curriculum Instruction Department has identified a process, as you know, of vetting existing instructional materials using a scoring tool. In alignment with your board policy, 2020, these efforts are grounded in data that we've collected from our educators, families, and students that told us we needed to reexamine our existing instructional material and their alignment to state standards. These data from stakeholders were published and shared across our district in the January 2017 K-12 Alignment of Standards Audit. Here's a reminder of the process that you've outlined for adoptions in Policy and Regulation 2020. Specific to the mathematics adoption taking place, we have two district curriculum development committees, or what we formally call, informally call them, our DCDCs. We have two scoring teams, one for elementary and one for secondary mathematics. Additionally, we have taken pause for each round of scoring to check alignment for student learning across elementary, middle, and high school, so that we can confidently build bridges for students, teachers, and families with any of the curriculums that are being considered for adoption and who make it through to the current final pilot stage. The efforts to update materials for instruction and classroom assessments launched in 2017 when educators, students, and families within our system provided us that invaluable feedback and indicated that we needed to get more clear on high-quality teaching and learning, while also updating our curriculum supports. This launched efforts with mathematics to prioritize standards and develop the P-12 Mathematics Instructional Framework. The efforts continued this fall with logistics around a request for information from vendors, followed by a request for proposals in alignment with purchasing and board expectations. We are currently in the third round of scoring, and we're grateful for the participation of over 1,000 TPS students for participating in these pilots. We are also grateful for educator participation to ensure we have a diverse perspective across grade levels and across courses. Over the next two months, we will continue through the pilot to scoring. If a vendor scores high enough and is escalated as the apparent winner by any given grade band of elementary, middle, or high, a recommendation will be made to the superintendent for adoption. And if the superintendent sees fit, she will escalate a recommendation to you, our school board. On the screen, you can see our intended timelines of each of these, if each of these recommendations go through. The top vendors, as identified through the scoring process, are outlined on this slide. As an apparent winner is identified through the process, we will provide you with more depth into the selected vendor. Through our scoring process, we have made sure a student's kindergarten through early high school journey in mathematics will be supported. The Curriculum and Instruction Department will partner with educators to create any bridging documents to ensure continuity between elementary, middle, and high school upon adoption. Assuming that there is an apparent winner and that one is escalated for each grade band, the CNI Department will partner with educators to provide supporting documents, resources, and toolkits to support the implementation with classroom and communication with students and our families. In the background, the Curriculum and Instruction Department will partner across CAB to plan for a rollout and implementation, clearly articulating with each vendor and our DART team on how we'll measure the implementation of these updated resources in order to monitor and support a high return on our investment. We will also update our communications plans and timelines to support communication with various stakeholders. During the summer, standards maps will be updated and aligned with the priority standards, instructional materials, and assessments. A communication toolkit for schools to use with families will be developed. For secondary, a model syllabus will be developed, as well as report card comments that will be updated to align to the standards, curriculum, and assessments. We want to thank our many CAB departments who are walking hand in hand with us during this adoption, and will continue partnering if we move forward with an apparent winner and a rollout. We look forward to bringing you more updates about the continued process and progress of this adoption through future board meetings, as well as Friday reports.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Debbie?
Yes, I have some questions. So I'm glad you're bringing this up tonight, because I've been talking to teachers about math curriculum, and I think they thought we were maybe farther along the adoption cycle than we are. So when we look at, I think, educational reports, and they survey and rate the curriculum, do we look at that also when we purchase curriculum?
Most definitely. The Ed Report has put out a very comprehensive report that shows us every piece of alignment of those curriculum to the standards, to rigor, to all of the various pieces. And yes, we use those as part of our adoption process and cycle, very closely reviewed.
So another question I have. So I did go to the math training last year, I think it was for teachers, the beginning of the year, for maybe for administrators, and we were doing New York math, correct?
Engage New York.
Engage New York.
At middle school. At middle school.
Oh, okay. So I know that people really like Engage New York, and I think there may be some elementary people using it, because I did hear from some bilingual teachers about how great that is. So first of all, being open source, meaning we don't have to pay for it, they said that it easily goes, is translated into the language of the student, for any kind of language, not just, you know, one or two, but anything. So if you get a student who comes to our country, who doesn't, can't read at all in their own language, at least they can do mathematical work, because the teacher can download that, and they said it's very easy. So I really want us to look at that and to talk to those bilingual teachers, since we have quite a few of those bilingual programs in our district, because it sounds like it's a really good source for a lot of people. And then people also are saying, "Can we use that in our program, or do we have to use what's mandated if something else is mandated?"
Well, let me first just respond to one piece of that, and then I have Dr. Hannah Benrow here, who's actually leading our math adoption as a director in Curriculum and Instruction, and so I'm going to have her kind of address the ELL portion of your question. But in terms of which resources can be used, once we go through formal adoption, we will expect that the curriculum that we adopt becomes the foundation of math instruction, and all of our resources and tools will be built around that. With that said, good teachers are always on the lookout for resources to support, and so we would never say you absolutely can't use any of the pieces of Engage that you found to be very, very helpful. We will ask them to use the curriculum as their foundation, but again, if there were pieces or tools they found that helped students grasp concepts quickly and were aligned to the standards and the rigor of the standards, then certainly we would allow them to use some pieces of that in their instruction.
Okay. So in the past, we have adopted several curricula that have not been, gone over big by teachers, and they've been problematic since the beginning. So I do hope that we listen to teachers in a big way about what they see as useful in their classroom.
Yes. And on the note around the Engage New York materials, while I cannot go into details, they did submit our initial submissions, and they did not make it past one of the scoring rounds. The vendors that are currently being piloted, it's really out of the hands of the Curriculum Instruction Department. We aren't scoring. We scored the very first round. There have been, there's been a second phase, and now there's a third phase with adoption. It is the teachers who are piloting the materials, who are the ones who are scoring and who will be truly informing the formal recommendation that goes forward. In terms of the bilingual materials, we actually have some teachers within our dual-language school of, the one that is Sheridan? No. Blicks. Blicks Elementary. And we have a teacher piloting the English and the Spanish versions, and then the vendors have different options for other languages. But within our current system, within a pilot of the amount of time, that's about one unit per vendor, that's kind of what made sense to try on those bilingual materials. So we are working our best to ensure that students can have access, regardless of how they're coming to us with different languages, to truly support their learning of mathematics.
And are there other open-source materials being considered?
Yes. At the middle school level, our two top vendors are Envision by Pearson and Open Up Resources. Open Up Resources is an open educational resource, OER vendor. And at the high school level, our three top vendors, as noted on the previous screen, I believe, are Kendall Hunt and Math Visions Project. Math Visions Project is also called MVP. It is an OER. And Envisions by Pearson.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Cobb?
Can you say a little bit more about what the pilot looks like in the high school? context, just given how math kind of gets, it's not as, students are taking different courses at different times, and so can you say how the pilot of the various content areas is happening in the high school context?
Sure. So, with each vendor, Kendall Hunt, Envision, and Math Visions Project, we're trying on about one unit's worth of materials. What we did was every vendor has a sequence and pacing guide that they normally say, this is what our units consist of. These are the standards, these are the topics for learning that our different units consist of. So, they gave that to us, the pacing guide, and then we shared it back with our pilot teachers. And so, we said, okay, about this month of March, that was the Pearson pilot at high school, at high school level, where will you be? And we also shared where we would normally be in our pacing guide. We know that some of the teachers weren't quite there, they were a little bit different places, so that's why we got their feedback. And so, each pilot teacher got the specific unit that aligned with what their students needed in that classroom, depending on the course. So, we are piloting in Algebra I, II, Geometry, and Algebra III, IV at the high school level.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? How, how many teachers are piloting over on, in the district, just across the board from the three levels?
We have over 1,000 students participating in the pilot. I need to look back at how many exact teachers. I know that all nine middle schools, eight of the nine, eight, eight middle schools are represented, and then I believe every high school, comprehensive high schools represented, and then Oakland is also part of the pilot. So, I'll go back and check on, double-check on the specific numbers.
Other question I have is, how much professional development are the teachers going to get when we go through the adoption and, and get there? Because not everybody's piloting, obviously, so, and I was around when expressions got adopted, and there wasn't professional development, and teachers really, really struggled with that.
Great question. So, professional development is part of the bid package that every vendor included within their pricing, so that we would, with our intended purchase price, we would purchase the professional development package to support. And in addition to that, we know that you're right, you're absolutely right, not every teacher is piloting, and then they're going to walk into school in a couple of months and have potentially new materials if we have an apparent winner of this bid. And so, we're looking at, once we know who the apparent winner is, how can we set up opportunities over the summer, whether it's webinar or different touchpoints, so that if teachers choose to log on and learn more, that they certainly do have access in advance of even the professional growth opportunities.
Great. Any further questions or comments?
How are the parents engaged in this?
So, within our, per Regulation 2020, we have our DCDC scoring teams. Those are consisting of educators. As part of our recent, we did a formal request for information with the vendors beyond what we had originally done, and that was to find out details about what family tools do they have. So, it's more of a feedback loop. Once an apparent winner comes to the surface, now how can we provide tools and resources and communication so, to support schools and teachers and communicating with families? And the nice thing is, many of those come in multiple languages to support our diverse community.
Okay. Thank you, Marie, and thank you, Hannah, for your great presentation. We look forward to getting the, the final product for adoption.
That's true.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Members of the public wishing to address the board. The school board encourages public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, please follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board, excuse me, secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Card submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You have up to three minutes to share your comments, and we have a screen over here that will show you a countdown, and when it reaches one minute, you will get a, a little ding that will tell you that you are, have one minute to complete your remarks, and we would appreciate it if you would complete your remarks within that time period. Superintendent Santorno?
First speaker is Eric Shelby, followed by Monique Scott.
My name is Eric Shelby. I am a junior at the Tacoma School of the Arts. First of all, I'd like to thank this opportunity to have internship at the school and exercising my love for filmmaking and photography and things like that. My internship is taking photos for the school yearbook and taking photos for, for the school Instagram page, as officially soda. I'd also like to thank just Soda for, like, existing, because that's a really cool school. It's given me a lot of opportunities to help me grow. Without it, I don't think I would have liked, I don't know, I don't, I don't.
It's okay, you're doing fine.
Without it, I wouldn't have learned that, so, that like, I like writing, I guess, because I took a creative writing class last semester, and that grew, made my love for poetry go. Also, like, just the English and humanities classes like that, without that, I never would have learned about, just like, obvious and popular events and stuff, like 9/11. I never knew a single thing about that. That helped me learn. That the school just gave me a new love for downtown, because I live in Northeast, I don't really get exposed to going to downtown or just Tacoma in general. I go to Federal Way a lot, anyway. There's film classes and stuff like that I take, it gets, gets me exposed to new cameras and all these equipment, 360 cameras, drones, not yet, though, but soon. Stuff like that, like, I, I even have equipment with me right now. Also, I love the showcases and stuff like that, student showcases, which just allows you to show your art and be passionate about what you like, and it's super, it's a really supporting school. And, yeah, I could talk about this all day. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, for sharing your next, your internship with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it Monique Scott? Followed by Pamela Kokay.
Yikes, I'm short. Okay. I feel nervous, because speaking in front of the board is slightly frightening. This is an iMessage, and I'd like to speak to you about how iMessages and other social, emotional learning practices have transformed my classroom. My name is Monique Scott, and I teach second grade at Stanley Elementary. In my classroom, my students know themselves as Scott family. We're not just learning together, but we're growing and we're doing life together. My goal isn't to be the best teacher, but it's to lay a solid foundation that equips them for life. Teaching social-emotional learning, or SEL, through explicit instruction this year, has helped my class in many ways. My kids have learned cognitive skills like focusing, emotion management, self-advocacy, and my favorite, conflict resolution. Teaching SEL using explicit instruction is like training a firefighter how to put out fires before they happen. You pre-teach positive behaviors and problem-solving. Instead of tattling, my students jump at the opportunity to walk the peace path, where they work together to create a win-win solution. Last week, I was genuinely about to lose my cool, frustrated after a student needed multiple reminders, and right at the moment where I was about to flip my lid, as we call it, a few students yelled chili hug, which refers to the stop-and-stay cool steps, a calming-down strategy in the Getting Along Together curriculum. I wanted to yell, but in that moment, I had to do the stop-and-stay cool steps, because they bought into it, and they believe in it, and I have to model that. Reading, writing, math, and other core subjects are super important. SEL doesn't take time away from those subjects, but it better prepares them for academics and creates a safer, risk-taking learning environment, too. When I teach math and then students don't perform well on the test, I don't see it as a character flaw, give them consequences, or send them to the office. I teach the skills they haven't mastered. Behavior and social problems should be treated the same way, focusing on restorative justice practices and teaching skills, focusing on finding appropriate discipline. Explicit instruction in SEL provides equity for children of all backgrounds, authentically supports the whole child, and equips them for life. And I thank you for the opportunity for letting me be a part of the pilot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pamela Kokay?
Good evening. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, too. Good evening, Superintendent Santorno, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, President Bial, members of the board, parents, and community. My name is Pam Kokay, and I grew up as a kid loving, loving to teach. I used to teach my cousins, and today I teach grade three at DeLong Elementary. I am here to share my perspective regarding the math pilot project for kindergarten to fifth grade that I'm a part of. It's been done under the expert guidance of Dr. Benrow, instructional facilitator for math, Mr. Roy Tatlonghari, and coach of coaches, Mrs. Julie Kenzer. The district decided to pilot two curricula, as you have just heard. The first math pilot is for Envision from Pearson, and the second is Ready Classroom, which is a part of the iReady curriculum that we currently use in many K through five schools throughout the district. Both Envision and Ready Classrooms are excellent choices. Both offer a high level of student engagement, assessment, differentiation, and use of technology, which is very important for our schools today. Most importantly, the curriculum can be accessed by students and parents at home across multiple platforms like smartphones and tablets, as we know most kids have smartphones today. Teachers will meet in early May to score both curricula. I'm very appreciative of the fact that I was given this wonderful opportunity, opportunity to be a part of this process. The pilot was open for all teachers and coaches to come together to find a curriculum that is more relevant and give students the necessary foundation to prepare them for middle school. I personally feel that collaborating with peers on determining the pros and cons of the curriculum is a very effective means of determining the material that we will use. Also, teaching the curriculum in my class has helped me gain a better knowledge of the different routines of teaching math. The updated curriculum that I worked with provided an excellent quality of student engagement and detailed many ways of teaching math concepts. It also offered interactive math lessons that can be taught at school and assigned for further study at home. I found that the teacher guides are very well-written and explain the common core state alignment, as well as detailed math practices for each and every lesson. Most importantly, they have excellent examples for teachers to explain math, not only to ELL students, as we just talked about, but also detailed differentiation for students at different, at different levels. I am very curious, and I look forward to seeing the results of our findings. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
That's it?
Okay, thank you. We will close public comment. Next on our agenda, see consent agenda, entertain a motion to approve.
I move approval.
Second. Then moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any questions or comments, members of the board? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is adopted, consent agenda is adopted. And I'll get to the bottom here. Moving on to policy matters, we have second reading of policy nine, Act 91, second reading of policy number 6700, nutrition, health, and physical fitness. Renee, Ms. Trueblood, could you give us a brief overview of what that is, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The legal department recommends that the board adopt the proposed revised policy 6700. The background for this is that each local education authority that participates in the National School Lunch Program is required to develop a wellness policy. And our district's policy was adopted in 2005, and we have worked, our Assistant General Counsel Malik Benrow has worked with our Nutrition Services Department and our Chief Operations Officer to rewrite this policy to meet all current standards.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I think we just, oh, I'm sorry, Director Cobb?
I just have one question about the policy, and I know there's a ton of cross-references at the bottom of it, but I think we also are required to have a comprehensive school safety policy, and I'm just wondering if there are any provisions within the requirements around the school safety policy that overlap with the wellness policy, and wondering if there's, if there are, if there's consistency between the two, now that we've adopted, updated this policy.
Malik, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Thank you.
So, that's a good question. The requirements to make our updated changes to 6700 come from the HHFK, the Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Act, on those passed in 2015. It's a separate requirement from those rules that require sort of like school safety plans. So, those do exist, but they're not a part of the, of the 6700 or the proposed 6700 we're putting forward for a second reading today. So, this really is about, like it says in the, in the description, it's around nutrition and wellness, there's also going to be a regulation that we're required to adopt that kind of spells out the specifics of what this looks like. So, while there are like safety pieces, kind of around like students making healthy and safe choices, as far as sort of physical safe spaces in schools, that's a bit of a different animal than what this, this policy is addressing.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Policy is adopted for all. Moving on, item 92, second reading of policy number 3115, homeless students' enrollment rights and services. Ms. Trueblood?
Thank you. The legal department, in working with the Title I and LAP department, recommends that the board adopt policy number 3115. This one has also been revised. This policy is addressing homeless students' enrollment rights and services. That our policy was not meeting the recommended guidelines from the Washington State School Directors Association, and these revisions, that again, credit goes to Assistant General Counsel Malik Benrow, working with the department. This reflects the district services that follow the McKinney-Vento guidelines, and we address some placement issues, waivers for courses completed toward graduation, and transportation, among others. So, this is also a policy that brings us into compliance with the best practices.
Okay. I'll move approval.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Policy is adopted for all. Moving on, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org. About finance. Curriculum instruction, we have none tonight. Moving on to business matters. Item 12-1, approval of District Asset Preservation Program Annual Report. Mr. Aldridge, are you going to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction for the Chief Operations Officer recommends the board review the annual report of compliance with OSPI's asset prevention programs building condition standards.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions of Mr. Aldridge?
Yeah, good questions.
Director Leon?
Could you just explain the, the second chart that you have on there, and the columns that describes building conditions assessment, and then there's percents, and there's, you know, anywhere from upper 90s to 70s with different schools? What, what that?
Well, the program as a whole, the, when the state passed this back in 1993, basically requires any school that receives additional state funding to have to do an assessment of their facilities every year. So, when we're looking at the building condition assessment, that really is a grade of where that building falls from 1 to 100 percentages, for is looking at the exterior of the building, the interior, the furnishings, and the teaching components, to see where, where that would actually rank versus on a, on a 100% scale.
So, 100% would be like a brand-new building?
Yes.
Essentially? Okay, I understand.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion is adopted for all. Other business. Item 13-1, adoption of resolution number 2057. Item 13-1, adoption of resolution number 2057, establishment of the Parker Family Scholarship Trust Fund. Ms. Medina, I believe that's yours.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution number 2057 and approve the establishment of a trust fund.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, are there questions or comments of Ms. Medina, Director Wenskill?
So I just had a question because it doesn't really say what this, what, it's for a scholarship, but they didn't say what it's for, or if it's dedicated to something in particular, or how much funding there is.
Correct. Yes, we did send out a Friday report this last week, and in that Friday report, we indicated that there is $100,000 that will be set up with the expectation that annually a scholarship will be awarded to one male student athlete and one female student athlete in the amount of $2,000 for each at Wilson High School until the funds are depleted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Director Cobb?
Is this an interest earning account?
Yeah, all of our trust funds would be invested with the Pierce County Treasurer's Office.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe this is the family of athletes that went to Wilson.
Correct.
That I went to school with, actually. Okay, they were pretty good athletes. All righty. Is there any further questions or comments? All right, one more.
How many of these funds do we have? I mean, as a high school student, remember, like, all the scholarships that are given out, and those have been added, like the Trufont Scholar, like, how many of these do we have?
I'll have to get back to you on how many of them we have. I know we have a number, I want to say there's at least a dozen of them. We hold a million, several million dollars in trust for a number of purposes, so I think I'll need to give you a more detailed breakdown of what that looks like.
I know the Foss family has a rather large one at Henry Foss, where they give full scholarships for four years. All right, all those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion is adopted. Report to the board. Item 14-1, Urban Collaborative Biannual Report.
Tonight, we have our two special ed directors, Mr. Stephen Mondragon and Mr. John Bell, here to give us our semi-annual report. The Urban Collaborative Report started under Superintendent Santorno, gosh, 2011-ish? End of 2011, beginning of 2012?
Yes, I think so.
And so we have continued to follow that plan and give you updates. We went from being quarterly updates into a semi-annual, and with that, I'll turn it over to our two directors.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. My name's John Bell, and I'm Director of Student Services for the secondary.
Good evening, Stephen Mondragon, Elementary Director.
And I'd like to thank President Bial and members of the board, Superintendent Santorno, student rep, for the opportunity to continue to come before you with the Urban Collaborative Information. The semi-annual report gives us an opportunity to remain accountable to moving forward for our students with disabilities. The format of our report takes a familiar context so that we can move quickly through some of the information that has been there in the past, and there's additional information in the appendix that supports some of the pieces that are here. But as we start with the timelines at a glance, we're in that 18, 19 school year, and as we look forward to 1920, you can see where the work is continuing, and we will continue to focus our attention, especially this evening, on items two, specifically two and four with the embedding Common Core and inclusive education, also within materials and assistive technology. And then later on, we'll talk more about student data as well. Speaking of student data, I'd like to share our enrollment growth within special education, and I guess I've got the data going a little bit backwards there. So the 18, 19 data that is currently is that first one, and it goes back to the 11, 12 data where we began with 34, 96 student population with disabilities, to our current, as of October, we were at 3,915. As of April's annualized count, we were at 3,975, and that number continues to grow. Off to the right, I've adjusted that graph to show the district's enrollment over that same period of time, and the sped percentage of population, of that population exists on that graph as well, and that's newly added to this presentation. By disability, our students fall into categories that are similar to what we've seen before. There are 13 eligibility categories within special education, and the specific learning disabilities continue to be the highest membership group within our population, at 37%, roughly, with health impaired at just over 20%. And then you can see where the remainder of the categories fall, such that some categories are very low representation within our population. By LRE, the Least Restrictive Environment, we continue to work on providing opportunities for our students to access general ed curriculum in the general ed classroom. And so the number of students or the percentage of students that are in gen ed classrooms 80 to 100% of their day is at 59%, and that's a target area for us to continue to grow those opportunities. Our students by race continues to mirror the district's population demographics as well, and I have included that graph off to the right of the students with disabilities chart. Our African-American students represent 19.97, so just under 20%, which is roughly a 6% discrepancy from where the district's population is. But other categories, the Hispanic percentage of students with disabilities mirrors that of the district. The white population is at 36%, so very close to what the district's demographic is, and you can see where the other categories are relatively close.
So I wanted to share some information with you about the work that we are engaged in as a department, and kind of three areas of FOCI that we have. So the first one is our work, our collaborative work that we're doing with Java-like groups and professional learning networks. We have five of these. We have an elementary and a secondary learning resource, PLN, and we have three self-contained PLNs. First, our students with autism, students with developmental delays, and our students in therapeutic learning centers, our TLC, Students for Emotional and Behavioral Disorders. Very excited with the opportunity to continue to partner with curriculum and instruction with regards to the best grant. So we have over 20 sped first and second-year sped teachers that we are supporting as a department, and our goal is to retain effective teachers. And so we have instructional facilitators, behavior specialists, TOSSAs, that support those first and second-year sped teachers. And then as a department, we are gauged in a lot of deliberate work around behavior, instruction, and compliance. And to go in a little bit more detail about instruction, really excited for work around Stire Fitzgerald. So that is a curriculum that we use for our students in self-contained autism and our students with developmental delay. And I'm happy to report that 27 of our autism and developmental self-contained classrooms have that program. We've had ongoing professional development this year, with a continual focus of professional development as well. We have a re-engaged Stire Fitzgerald training upcoming this summer. And also wanted to highlight our work around standards-aligned IEPs. So we're really focusing on making connections between the IEPs, Individualized Education Programs, and Washington State Learning Standards. And so we have trained all of our elementary LRC teachers, and this summer, we have upcoming trainings for our secondary LRC teachers, as well as our self-contained teachers. And then some areas of work that we're engaging with regards to behavior. So we've, as a behavior team, I've done really some deliberate work around those bottom three items there around functional behavioral assessments. So multi-part series of, beginning by identifying behavior and working with staff, to think about what are those specific behaviors the students engaged in, and then from that, collecting data, from the data, generating hypotheses about why students are acting that way, and then identifying what interventions we can put in place, and then the whole time making sure that we're monitoring the data as well, and then from that, implementing behavior improvement plans. And then we also have an online software program called Review 360 that we use, that our staff uses daily to monitor student data and look for trends. And as John shared as he opened up the presentation, so as we continue this work for the rest of this year, and as well as into the 19, 20 school year, we want to continue those collaborative opportunities that we have with our Java-like teachers to be engaging in that work and the focus on data and effective instructional practices. Want to continue to implement Stire Fitzgerald, and also that work to around standards-aligned IEPs, and continue to support our staff. We know that the standards-aligned IEPs is going to be a multi-year project, is not going to be something that's just going to be quickly completed, but it's going to have to be ongoing professional development, and also working alongside of curriculum and instruction as well to support our staff. And then we will have future reporting in October of 2020, and we'll be posting the reports on the district website.
We'll report in October of 2019 as well.
Oh. My apologies.
I wondered about that.
Sorry about that.
No problem. All right, questions or comments, members of the board? I have one I'm going to start with. I noticed that our percentage of sped is at 14.3 of our total enrollment. Is that above the state, what the state allows us that they fund?
Currently, yes.
How much is, what is it? It's 13-something, is it not?
13.5 right now.
Okay. I did a little consulting work a number of years ago in that area, and I thought, so in other words, so what happens, that means that we then pick that up out of our own dollars, and that's why that has impacted our levy, the lack of levy funds, if I'm correct.
Yes.
That we have funded most of picking that up out of that. I'm very pleased to see the number of kids now in general ed classrooms. And I was reading through the appendix about why we do that, and for parents, and I think, you know, we had that video that I still think about, the young man at Lincoln, you know, about, I feel like, for the first time in my life, a normal kid, and I think that is something that, if we really believe in that whole child, that we do. I also saw that you are, and you made me explain a little bit about the teaching of the Common Core now for all of the kids. I don't know which one he wants to do that, I'm just curious about how you roll that out.
Yeah, so we started with pilot, with five of our elementary buildings, and working with support with curriculum and instruction, and some of their staff members, that, an essential piece that we need to have around that is collaboration between general ed and sped. So five buildings were identified as a pilot, and we have worked with a presenter from the WEA that came and presented on standards-aligned instruction. And then we have an ongoing monthly meeting with the pilot groups to, eventual goal is to be implementing the Washington State standards in the IEP, and we've just been going
I saw that.
Kind of a gradual release, month by month, about building on, you know, looking at the baseline assessments that we have, and then looking at the standards, and, you know, if you have a student that's at fifth grade, but, you know, they're functioning around third grade, and it's going back and thinking about what are those prerequisite skills that we have to support, and making sure that we're having that support so that student receives that, so that they're going to be able to eventually access the grade-level standard. And we have trained, besides the pilot, we've also trained all our elementary LRC teachers in February, and then that's an ongoing professional development item that we have in the professional learning networks, and then we're going to continue that in the upcoming years and upcoming months, because as I said, it's not a one-and-done, it's going to be
Right.
A lot of intentional support around it.
How are you going to measure that progress?
Measure it through surveys, feedback from staff, and then also feedback from the pilot group, and then we have, it's an ongoing, within our instruction department, we're constantly seeing what the outcomes are, and then we're also looking at student data as well to see what the impact is.
Will that become a data point that you will eventually share with us?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you, Stephen. Debbie?
So I have a question about curriculum. So I like to hear, I'm glad to hear that you're working with the curriculum department, because I did hear from some teachers that, how can we help special ed teachers, and this is also Tidal, so it's a different department than you have right now, but use our new phonics curriculum, which they would be really anxious to use in special ed and in Tidal? So is there a way that we can make that happen?
Yeah, so we're working with curriculum and instruction. Our self-contained programs will be receiving the curriculum, and then we're also working on scheduling professional development for our LRC teachers, so they know what students will be receiving when they're in the genetic classroom, and then the impact that will have to support them if they are being pulled in for services.
Will they be able to use it also, though?
Yes.
So I think some people are under the impression they're not going to be able to use it. So that would be great if they are, since we're adopting this curriculum for the, all the students of Tacoma, I think, so. And then Tidal, I say that to the superintendent.
Sure.
Also, that it's a concern that maybe it's not going to be used by them.
It should be accessible, though.
Okay.
It's going to be used by them.
So if we can see that that happens, that'd be great.
A basic principle there is, in the data around inclusive classrooms, is that the students have access to that, and then they get additional supports through both Tidal and LAP. We recognize that there are situations where, for individual students' needs, or a variety of things, that may not always happen, but that's the model that we're driving to, so that all students would have access to the phonics curriculum. And in addition to that, they would have extra supports through Tidal, LAP, and English language learners.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that those other teachers would like to have the training and be able to use that as the extra support, not just from the classroom teachers, so.
Agreed.
So just make sure that's happening, so.
Any?
That's all I have to say right now.
Andrea, Director Cobb.
On slide four, I just want to say thank you for adding the students by disability type. I don't think that's something that was included in previous reports, so it's nice to have that breakdown there. But then on slide six, I am curious about the percentage of African-American students and that discrepancy that you made reference to between the percentage of their enrollment in the district and their percentage of students identified with disabilities. I would like to see that just a little bit more broken out by disability type, and to see how that compares with the types of disabilities that students are identified for across the other racial and ethnic groups. And then, there's one other piece in the appendix. Oh, the question I had was just about what the timeout logs are in the safety area. Can you say a little bit more about what that tracks?
Sorry, could you please repeat that?
The timeout logs? And it was one of the recommendation areas from the very beginning, sorry. In the safety, underneath the safety benchmark, timeout logs. Can you just say what that is? It's in the very beginning slide.
So you're talking about here at the beginning of that?
Yep, the very bottom.
The use of timeout rooms originally was problematic, and so logging the in and out of students within each classroom was something that we began to track as a result of that, and began to track more intently with the goal of reducing the amount of time spent in that. Ultimately, we removed the majority of the timeout rooms as they're called, or as they were called then, and such that it, really, the reporting is based on isolation incidents now and restraint incidents. And so those are federal reports that are provided annually.
Thank you.
Director Leon?
Yeah, you made a comment about the Fitzgerald curriculum.
Yeah, you made a comment about the Fitzgerald curriculum, continuing to implement it. It's not completely implemented yet, there's still some process on that, is that what you meant by that?
Yes, there's still some additional classrooms that need to receive that.
About what percent of the classrooms have it, that you think?
About two-thirds, two-thirds of our classrooms already have it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Thank you, gentlemen, it was a good report, appreciate it. Okay, moving on, Board comments and reports. I'll start with Director Cobb.
I just had a couple of comments tonight, going back mainly to some things that were said in public comment and just some reflection. Oh, with regard to the curriculum adoption discussion, I just want to reemphasize, I said it when we were talking about PE curriculum and said it when we were talking about phonics, but it's just great to hear from teachers. So I appreciate the teachers that we heard from tonight about the social-emotional learning and the piloting of the math, but as we get closer and closer, I just encourage folks to keep coming and sharing your feedback on how those, how the curriculum is working for you, because it's great for us to hear. Also, just broadly, this is just a thought that occurred to me as we were recognizing our high school principals and the great work that they are doing. I still hear sometimes reference to the fact that Tacoma at one time was a dropout factory. And just given where we are now, I feel like we should ceremonially like put the term, like we need to create a plaque or something that we crush and like, and just put it to rest.
Yeah, we need to burn it up or bury it.
We don't talk about it anymore, because it just seems like so far from where we are, and we're doing such great work as a collective.
I know, that bothers me too.
It seems like we should like kill it.
I agree, absolutely.
And then lastly, I just want to say thank you to the public out there and for those folks who keep coming and giving public comment. I was just, again, this is just mostly reflections and comments tonight, but just in my short, relatively short time on the Board compared to some of you, it just feels like the engagement, the level of engagement of those folks who come and give public comment just keeps getting higher and higher. So I just want to acknowledge those folks who've been showing up at the budget hearings and showing up at our regular Board meetings, and the substance of the comments is really great, be it things that challenge us or things that support things that we're doing. It just feels very engaged, so I appreciate that, and you should tell your friends to come and share their opinions too. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Leon?
Yeah, thanks. I had a visit at Sammy recently, I just wanted to mention a few of the things I learned. I hadn't been to Sammy's site in quite a while, went through several of the classrooms there this past Monday. Thank you for Mr. Trenton Nettles, who gave me the tour and keeping me bopping around through all the different classrooms, but visiting nutrition class with Ms. Farewell, leadership class, they were working on leadership around food nutrition in school. They did ask me, I don't know the answer to this, but at some point I said I would ask, and I haven't asked yet, but they don't have apparently a lot of hot food there at Sammy, so they were wondering about that and what the reasons are around that. I don't need an answer for that now, but maybe we can get it later. Mr. Hashnick at the CTE Design Class was developing, helping them develop inventions with their computer, their 3D printers. Ms. Mann in the art class was doing, was doing art and drawing, but in a way that they were studying how to do facial recognition software coding. They were going to do the coding in a different class, but they were learning about the art part of facial recognition software and drawing images of people's faces upside down, which is apparently the scientific way to do it, which was very impressive to see. Chemistry class with Ms. Lee, doing reactions and hands-on lab work, they do a lot more hands-on now, so chemistry is less boring, and kids were pretty happy and learning in there. So SAT prep questions with one of the, I didn't write down the name of the teacher, the biology teacher, but super engaging school there. And the fiddle on the roof is finished now, but it was, I'd like to just thank all the teachers and volunteers that helped with that. Ms. Jacobson and Ms. Schaefer were the main directors in the music program there at Stadium, and they're so inclusive. There was about 150 students in this production, two different casts, 10 shows, a lot of hard work. They lost their technical coordinator this year, this past year because of the budget cuts, so the students learned how to do those skills, worked a lot of extra time, and put on a great show. And then several of us were at the Oakland Medical Clinic, Health Clinic opening this past week. It's been open for a few weeks, but they grand opened this week, and it was just inspiring to see students and the teachers and the partnerships that we have there, so PLU, Multicare, us, their, TFM, Tacoma Family Medicine, along with, of course, community and schools. But when these kids have that health center in their, in their, in their own school, their grades are going to go up, less absenteeism, greater GPAs, less illness, decreased costs. I won't bore you with all the exciting details on how excited we are, not to treat them in the ED or in the hospital, but the data is there that 50% less asthma admissions and millions of dollars saved in other cities, and we're going to see the same thing here. So nice work to Tacoma Public Schools in partnering with that.
Yeah, just to add to that, three days a week, I guess, is when they're seeing patients, so that's really good. Then they have that nursery school down below, and they see those students also, so that's very handy. Oh, so last time I talked about going to the Battle of the Books with the middle school they had at Lincoln, Truman was the winner. And then after that, I went, Washington Elementary did a similar event, and it wasn't called Battle of the Books, so I can't remember exactly what the title was, but they had five teams of students who read a series of books that had answered 150, well, 150 points they had allotted, and it was really exciting, and I hadn't heard of any of those books, so I've got to read, I've got to get back into my children's mode of reading these children's books, but it's really exciting, and all, the third, fourth, and fifth graders got to hear the program, and it was pretty exciting, and the superintendent was there also.
That's great, great, great program. Okay, thank you. Sure, hon, go ahead.
And then, so continuing with the musicals, I went to Wilson's Beauty and the Beast, and that was amazing. Shout out to their director as well. And then Mary Poppins is tomorrow and Saturday. There's one show tomorrow and two shows on Saturday. And I just want to touch on the math curriculum. I think it'll be really beneficial for our students to have algebra and geometry be the same in middle school as high school, because some students get started on algebra in seventh grade or eighth grade, and then some get started in high school. And so sometimes there can be a disconnect between the, when they go into algebra 3-4, what they're expected to know, and I think that if there is like an aligned curriculum and everyone's on the same page, then there won't be as many holes that they have to fill or people that are more farther ahead. So yeah, I'm excited to see that as well.
Great.
That's good feedback, thank you for that.
Thank you. The, I want to call out Principal John Jones at Oakland. John, it was John's really idea to start that clinic, and he worked hard, and we've all worked hard at getting there. It took a long time, we met with the Multicare people, and, you know, a year ago, we were wondering if we were going to get there, and Senator Murray came to visit, and she said, "Are you going to get there?" And I said, "Yeah, we will eventually," and we did. Anything worth doing is worth hanging in there, and that's certainly something worth doing, and I'm hoping that at some point, if we, you know, are able to have the funding and so on, is to expand that program out beyond Oakland to our other high schools. And I think it would be, you know, really, really beneficial, given our high poverty rate in our schools, and a lot of our kids do not have access to high-quality medical care, and that's why we started this, and it does show Seattle's done it, other places have that. It does help their academics when they are, when you feel well and you have access and you're not worried. So anyway, kudos to our partners, and we look forward to continuing forward with additional opportunities to provide care that goes beyond just giving our kids an academic education. Thank you. All right, announcement of future Board meetings, Thursday, May 9, 2019, 6:00 p.m., regular business meeting. Thursday, May 16, 6 o'clock, study session.
You want me to final decision?
No, I saw that, Foss High School, maybe at Foss High School, that's tentative. And then on Thursday, May 23, 2019, 6:00 p.m., regular business meeting. And with that, we are adjourned.